Hey, yeah. Now we are, we are.
Hey, Jerry. Thanks to you and the other Jerry. I feel like I really confused this out that you built that.
The what?
That you built, Jerry. What are you building?
Well, you know, I do like my dinner party. I probably did it in addition.
I did that once.
But they don't really love me. They deserve.
They.
So they're all going to say anything with Mike?
Yes, they were there today.
Yo, I got so many plums.
This is the June twenty-one, twenty-two meeting of Woodstock community units for the September word of education. Please rise from the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the revolver for which stands one nation under God and visible with a breathing justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Dr. Bidwell?
Here.
Dr. Ferris?
Presenting.
Mr. Gilmore?
Here.
Mr. Hadley? Mr. Homow?
Springer.
Mr. Muselli?
Here.
Mr. Brucey?
Okay. First item of business is our consent agenda. Uh, consent agenda is front of you, in front of you, along with uh the addendum, personnel addendum. Um, please take a moment. If any of you would like to be pulled from the agenda, please look at the note. Or from the consent agenda, please look at the note. And otherwise, if you're whatever in your right, there's a special motion on page one hundred. Should point out that also on your desk are approval of the twenty-two, twenty-three property and casualty insurance renewal and also workers compensation insurance renewal, which includes the invoices that will not include in the four package.
Move to waive the reading of and approve the consent agenda as presented in the board agenda, including the personnel addendum and two-point-eight approval of twenty-two, twenty-three workers' compensation insurance renewal and two-point-nine approval of twenty-two, twenty-three property and casualty insurance renewal.
If you got Dr. Bidwell with a second?
Second.
Pardon me, but Dr. Bidwell seconded by Dr. Ferris. Roll call.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Dr. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Homow?
Yes.
Mr. Muselli?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Okay, next item on our agenda are communications. Communications are time for community members that are deployed to the principal point of view not to be an issue. There's a sign-up sheet for the public to identify the name, address, phone number, name of organization, representative, any and a brief description of the topic to be addressed. How is the general number in three minutes and how do I cover my board policy? Two, call in two thirty. Did we have anybody to sign up? Can we check? Brian? Nope. Here, are there any members of the public in which to address the board at this time? Okay. No public comments or any staff comments? No staff comments. Is anybody, any board comments? Uh, just one quick thing, I think I attended the uh boost week open earlier this month. Uh, there's another one coming up at uh Woodstock North. For anybody who's interested in playing in that, I would like to play if I could find someone to play with. So, anyone who's interested, let me know. Any other board comments? Okay, well, we'll do our super tense report.
All right, well, we're in summer swing here with all of our families. Students and staff are having a great summer, enjoying the time off, the warm weather we're having last couple of weeks. It's a great time for all of our stakeholders, our students, our family, our staff to recharge, get ready for the next school year. I mean, even though it is summer, still busy both in our administrative offices and in our schools. Uh, we're deep in our planning for next school year in our administrative office and we have summer school going along with summer camps, high schools. So it's a, it's also a busy and exciting time of the year as we look to start towards another great school year in August. So that's our report. Hope everyone's enjoying their time.
All right, uh, we have no unfinished business, so we'll do our new business. The first item of new business is our strategic plan end of year review.
So we, we provided, as we do every year, uh, the strategic plan that the board approved uh in September. We now come back and, and look at, you know, goal by goal, measure by measure, how do we do? Uh, the first one is student growth rate yet? And that's incomplete because we won't have final scores there until the fall. We'll, we'll do a whole meeting on that. I think we are, I think we did hit, our primary numbers has hit both those goals, but we won't know for sure until uh October. But, but we're excited about that. I think we had good growth this year, which is what we needed coming out of COVID, but we're excited. Um, the goals took close to even gap for Matt. I mean, most of our goals were completed as you look through here. You know, a lot of the work we're, we're excited about, um, our continuation of, um, you know, our, our credit. The high school has been a great success. We're really excited about that. Um, not complete, we didn't complete the whole hospital site community engagement. And I think we just, we got, um, just a little short on time, so instead of brushing it into the year, we're going to move it to next year. So that was a goal we did not complete, unfortunately. And we'll definitely have that uh in our radar start of the next school year, uh, the next August, September. But the bright side aside, it hasn't gone anywhere. It's still nice and green, so. Still have a, a great opportunity there. Other than that, we've completed overnight kind of our goals. Um, you know, all in all, we're excited. A lot of work we're doing, but a lot of work to still be done, which, which is exciting for us too, so. You know, have this tonight, take any comments you have. We'll bring back in August a rough draft for the next strategic plan and goals. And then, you know, I have two meetings in September for you to give feedback before we put it in place. And then just probably take any comments or questions from the board.
Does anybody have any comments or questions about the strategic plan?
I had some, I, I found the relatively interesting, the uh the staff uh survey that was done, some of the, some of the thoughts. I learned what the general thoughts were on the staff wellness survey and, you know, general happiness within our employees.
Yeah, I think it, when you look at the last couple of years in education, uh, I was really pleased with the numbers probably. But I think, you know, we, we've tried so hard. Um, you know, obviously there's a monetary compensation, that, that's contractual. We've tried so many things to try to reach out to our staff in the last year and probably more than that, just to learn how much we appreciate them. You know, whether it be the, you know, we did the ceremony this year, um, we did the wellness initiative where we tried to do monthly, bi-monthly events. So we've, we've tried really hard to do that. I think what else I saw there were positive. Uh, I think people know we're trying. I think it's a, you know, it's still, it's still in action. We still have to grow there and continue to meet them. And there's a lot of national research on that too, coming out, just how you make people feel, that sense of belonging where they work. I think we're at a strong basis, which we're really excited about, but we're really excited about continuing to grow in that as well.
I'd see like, for example, something that I thought was very interesting is the number of people who participated in the activities. Such as, you know, you gotta list it, um, meditation, yoga, staff workout, staff footwork. Overall, we lay over the support groups and stuff, the board is, it's going to be utilized as the other, as the activity, getting other groups of people.
Yeah.
I mean, is that something that you?
Yeah, so, you know, I think, and a lot of times people want to have fun, and that, that's what we ran into, you know, but we did the Christmas, yeah, Christmas cookies that were, we sold out, right? That was great. Um, the craft stuff, people can't get enough of that, you know, our teachers, and this is all internal, right? I mean, our, our teachers, you know, making crafts for the holidays, you know, and people really enjoyed that. I think, you know, the one thing we do get feedback on is when they can disconnect a little bit, right? And, and from their job and to connect more to people. And a lot of these events we've had successful, I think do that successfully. So we absolutely want to continue that and see what else we can do uh going forward.
So, um, I had somebody reach out to me about feedback on the survey in general. So the staff, um, requesting that they weren't sure if it was confidential or not when they filled out the survey. And so if there was a way for them to know, like when they answer the questions, that it's not linked to like their email account or things like that, just so like that, like they can be totally transparent and honest with their feedback. So I don't know if there's a way to do that. It seemed worth mentioning.
Yeah, we, we don't trace, we don't track any of that.
I know that you don't, and nobody has the time to do that, but, and you know, I get the concern.
I'm not sure we could actually.
Right.
Um, but we can put it, we can put it in there again, for sure, yeah.
I think, you know, that way we know for sure that.
I don't, I don't have any problem with that at all. We can, just we have to remember, do it next year, we can add these surveys. Completely anonymous, we don't track it, nor do we want to. I mean, you know, we, we do that because we want an honest look at how we're doing. I mean, I, you know, university, how can we continue to meet the needs of our staff? Thank you for the feedback, absolutely.
All right, any other comments, concerns? All right, well, as Dr. Wong indicated, um, this is an ongoing process. If you have any comments or concerns, I'm sure you would be willing to listen to them and then let them go to the strategic plan going forward into our next year, so.
Absolutely.
Kind of helping sort of nail it, so. All right, thank you. Next item is the approval of the insurance committee recommendations.
Brian's got to go sit on that.
Good evening. Uh, insurance committee met June fourteenth. That, that, uh, that committee is made up of, split equally between administration and teachers and a part of, I'm sorry, staff and also at least one member of each of our unit. Dwayne Piper and I are the two co-chairs of the committee and as has been with us for many, many years now, Dave O'Hara from the Horton Group is our consultant. Mr. O'Hara met with us, he presented us a report on the performance of our medical and dental plans and then he made some recommendations. Uh, two recommendations that he made was one for a five percent increase in the premium amount for the medical insurance and a five percent decrease in our dental. Uh, he based this on, uh, the data from last year's calculations, predictions moving forward into next year. I have some questions to Mr. O'Hara. The committee voted on both items and was unanimous vote to approve those recommendations and bring it to the board.
Anybody have any questions or concerns?
You know, being self-funded, we're really at, at the mercy of the market and, and our, in our year, but five percent is, is below market average right now. It's really not that bad an incre, I mean, you can't see any increase, but, um, you know, market trends to be seven or eight where again are below the trend. So we're somewhat excited by that. Obviously, that's a huge expenditure for us.
Remind me how that increase of premiums would be paid, would be paid by the, by the member, by the, by the staff, would it contribute to by the district?
Both, I mean, that's majority of the district, but it increases every once in a while, five percent across the board.
And what is, what is the projected actual cost here? You know?
Uh, I have that again.
And what, what, what were the costs?
Total, I'm not sure. Yeah, total is approximately, um, again, this is an estimate because I don't have it right in front of me, but uh, total on an annual basis, uh, it's probably a, I can't get the math wrong, um.
Okay, then no, I, I, you know, no, that's fine.
I'd say, I'd say, um, only based up to three thousand, so.
It's a thousand?
Yeah. Yeah.
Any else have any question? Now, there's just a motion on page two-hundred and seventy-two of your material.
Move to approve the recommendations for a five percent increase in medical insurance premiums for the period of July first, twenty-twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three and a five percent decrease in dental insurance premiums for the same period.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Bidwell, seconded by Mr. Homow. Roll call, please.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Homow?
Yes.
Mr. Muselli?
Yes.
Dr. Ferris?
Epstein.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Okay. Now, that's, um, group business, there's a special pride award to every.
Okay, so I brought this up at, I think, our last meeting. Uh, since then, um, Mr. Hadley and I, um, as well as our staff representative from the district, Matt. And we've just been kind of looking at how ideas and how to kind of refresh the, the awards. They've, they've, um, they've been doing them the same way for the last thirty years and we, you know, prior to COVID, we had kind of discussed making some changes or looking at it. COVID kind of forced our hand to do some, uh, reevaluation of the, the criteria. So we have a couple of different options that we kind of discussed and I wanted to, to get feedback on before we formalize it. Um, one thing we were looking at is trying to add some scholarship money potentially. Um, there's, there's so many different opportunities and our numbers of applications have decreased significantly even prior to COVID. So we were kind of looking at trying to give even a small amount just to kind of incentivize, but also to really truly recognize the students, um, that qualify for these awards. So we were looking at, it, there's two different ways we can go with this. My recommendation would be looking at one pride award winner from each high school. And the reason being is there's so many duplicated awards and categories there. And we've, we've kind of recognized going to all the end of the year banquets and the end of the year, um, award ceremonies. And it kind of takes away from how, uh, prestigious the award is to come from the board. So we looked at, we looked at different options in the different categories. And really, for me, it came down to, um, just being able to honor that, that particular student and not being able to say, I'm the pride award winner of Woodstock High School and I'm the pride award winner from Woodstock North. And with that, we thought we could do two-hundred and fifty dollars to each, so it would be a total of five hundred dollars for, um, a yearly basis. Um, and we, we really kind of looked at, obviously, we'd have to further develop the criteria. Uh, but personal achievement was one that really stood out to us as something that's fits with the pride award and really, um, recognizes somebody that's, you know, faced extreme hardship, extreme adversity, um, and really succeeded. And that was something that every year for me and being a part of this is really, um, I really enjoy being a part of that process and reading those, those, um, applications. Um, and there, and there are students that are probably lesser representative or lesser, uh, represented throughout, um, all the other awards and different categories. So that's kind of where, you know, my, my thoughts were, um, as well as John. And then we just looked at applications and, and prior to COVID, the numbers are down for the number of applicants we're getting. Throughout COVID, we had to make some changes just because the criteria set for certain awards, they weren't able to meet them during those time periods. Um, and then, you know, alternatively, if that's too drastic of a change, we also considered a four category at each school, uh, where we focused on the arts and service, personal achievement and vocational. So there's, there's definitely arguments and thoughts to be made either way, but that's kind of where I'm at and, uh, where we were kind of at. So if you got any questions or feedback?
Are, are you talking about eliminating them all and setting one pride award for each school? Is that what you're talking about doing or are you talking about, we're gonna keep, we're gonna rearrange what's with the argument we're already providing and then divide it to, you know, per award?
If.
Award for each of the, the, right?
So the, the first option would be to have one pride award winner for each high school. And it would be, um, we, we further develop, you know, the criteria of what that would look like. Um, but it would, it would probably focus on, like I said, the lesser representative students that, that maybe don't get the recognition and maybe lean towards the personal achievement category. Um, and then if that's, you know, alternatively, we could always, we could always just go to the, you know, the parallel version of four categories and then maybe do like a hundred dollar. So you're looking at five hundred dollars by year versus eight hundred dollars a year versus the two different options.
When you say vocational, what would that look like?
So vocational has changed over the years and the reason, the reason that we thought it would be okay, um, well, number one, we don't, at this time, we don't give any money. So there's the Ron Vendis Award, which is through, I think, the McCary County Foundation.
Yeah, they're, John Rea, the money, they, they're trying to execute it.
There's a, there's a ton of money available for specifically for vocational type students. Um, so, and that criteria for us has kind of changed over the years where we've almost gone to looking at students that academically are strong but also hold a job. So we felt like there was a little bit of a duplication there in the sense that somebody could more, would more likely apply to the Ron Vendis Scholarship Award because there's actually, there's money attached to it. Um, so that was kind of our thinking there. And that school, we, we looked at the service category, for instance, there's school service and community service and there's, it gets pretty confusing and it kind of blends together almost where we thought we could think that one category. If we were gonna go that route of keeping four, four categories at each the school.
I'm trying to think through what I want to say, so. I, I think, I don't dislike the idea of just having one award at each, each high school. I think I'd want to like flesh out or create more robust criteria for that though, because I, I've been on that committee before and I don't like the feeling of comparing people's traumas and then picking something based on that that doesn't sit well with me. And so I think I'd want to look at more objectively defined criteria that maybe can incorporate like an essay about challenges that you face and how that, you know, impacted you or things like that. But I, I have a little bit of a hesitation with how we've approached that particular award in the past.
Um, I'm personally involved with presenting two awards each, each year. And our criteria are only based on somebody who has achieved, you know, uh, their achievements after undergoing personal or family tragedies or hardships. And it's a very rewarding experience to do that. And we did that, we started those years ago because we thought that was a really underserved area because every year, I mean, I'm not saying anything bad about the kids that are the very best at everything that they do, but it's very repetitive. So we wanted to, you know, not every kid has that advantage, not every student. And I'm really in favor, I, this is the first I've heard this objection. I'm more in favor of one award. I mean, the four would be fine, but I really like that idea. I really do, because I think they, they don't mean very much. Uh, we, we go through and all these kids stand up there and it's like, well, what do we give them? Nothing, you know, it's like, what are we rewarded for? We call their name. So I don't know if it's appreciated or, you know, but I would like it to be something that, you know, you know, that somebody actually deserves out of personal love. That's all I do about it. I thank you.
I'm trying to remember what the four awards are off the top of my head. Personal achievement, I really wanted athletics, right?
There's, there's currently seven
Okay.
categories at each, at each school and then the arts are broken out into three. Where you have music, um, uh, theater and what else?
Visual.
Visual arts, right?
And I, and I recall having run into some problems with some of them, like, we were visual arts where they didn't offer a class or whatever would be necessary, something along those, they didn't have a class that was necessary to, to make the award. I mean, it made it more difficult. That was one of the problems. I mean, some of them kind of are dated. Some of them, I think, we give all, there's an awful lot of awards being announced during awards weekend. I think some of them are already been covered.
Definitely.
You've already got your athlete of the year where you can go to the athletic banquet. You really don't need to have another athletics award given out, so. I don't have any problem with rearranging them or maybe reducing them and, and doing what you're talking about, even if reducing them to one. The comments on the show that's been measuring trauma, never even occurred. That's why we like having it.
Thank you.
Because it brought something up. So I mean, there's a lot of things to be brought in. My question, I guess, at this point is, I mean, I, I think further we're receptive to making some changes to it. I guess the next question is, how do we go about doing it? What would be the polls on that? And, um, that's what I think we need to know, is what you're, what you're kind of thinking of is. And maybe we can have a session, part one session where we can talk about, we like this, we'll go like that one or, or you can figure out something and then give it to us and tell us what we, what we should do or what, we can talk about what to do with that.
Yeah, I mean, I think what we could do is we could develop, further develop our criteria. Um, and then we can look at, look at the monetary, uh, award. We're, like I said, the ability to give one award at each high school, two-hundred and fifty dollars to each, you know, student at each school would be, I think fairly significant. We, we probably see an increase in interest in the award. Um, and part of that would be also bringing them, bringing them to the board, to a board meeting and honoring, recognizing. Because that's probably one of my favorite parts that we missed out on in the last couple of years is being able to have students back at the meetings and recognize them for their achievements and, and, um, I don't know, I never went to, I never got, uh, brought to a board meeting when I was a kid and I think it's pretty cool. So I think it would be pretty cool if, if, uh, if we were able to do that. Um, as well as the monetary thing, I mean, like, like Bruce said, it's nothing to take away from the students that are recognized. But I think the, the thought behind this award and the thought behind it in the past was to recognize the students that weren't already being recognized. And I think the focus would be, um, to do that by, by bringing it down, you know, bringing it down to maybe one student. And then we can flesh out, obviously, we would, you know, I mostly wanted to get some direction before I go much deeper into criteria and that. And wanted to get feedback if it was a, a doable thing to do, you know, one student at each school and then add, add the money to it. And I think it would really be special and, um, and I've been on this, the committee since seven on the board, I think six years now. So I, I've, I've seen it kind of. So I, I, I've seen it kind of, uh, process and what we go through and what we look at, and um, I'm excited about the potential with it.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? So you had said, um, the two fifty each on a yearly basis. Do you mean, like, one class scholarship of two fifty that we get each year, or that they will get two fifty every year of year?
Yeah, no, just, just two, one time, two hundred and fifty dollar, I meant it would be a yearly basis.
Okay.
For the, for our, you know, our cost.
Gotcha.
But just one two hundred and fifty dollar scholarship for that senior, yes.
Alright, well, why don't you and John kind of sketch out the idea of what you want? Um, and then we'll talk about it as an end board meeting, if we can. Make some adjustments, see, it wasn't a general overall consensus, it's just in terms of what, what you visualize the awards as being, uh, whether it's one, or whether it's five, or whether it's twenty, whatever it is, what you're visualizing being, and then kind of what you figure the criteria are, and then we can talk about it, and maybe adjust a little bit. Is it okay?
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay. Any other discussion regarding the pride awards?
Yeah, I, I'd like, uh, for everybody to be here when we, you know, do make a decision on that. You know, so, and I know that it's a couple of members, and so that, that would be important to me, because it is, you know, it's the change for us.
Right, yeah, I know John was apologetic that he couldn't be here.
Oh, I'm not saying.
I know, but he, he did want it, you know, he, that's purposefully why we didn't fully bring everything tonight, because he couldn't be here. So he may have, um, he'll have further things to say, I know that.
Okay, well, we'll look forward to it. That's a part of the business. Um, next is our committee reports, have any committees, that, that's our last meeting, or do any committees have anything to report? Alright, so we'll move into a German, our game of motion with her. Some of them?
Yeah, good.
So Dr. Ferris, seconded by Dr. Bidwell, roll call please.
Dr. Ferris?
Yes.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Muselli?
Yes.
Mr. Homow?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Should you all next one?